On behalf of the President of the United States, the grateful nation, the military order of the Purple Heart, the Department of the Dakotas and Chapter 5355 of South Sioux Falls, I would like to present you this Purple Heart recipient flag for your combat wounded father and the grateful nation for a small token. Please have one, three, and if at times in Memorial Day or Veterans Day, whenever you want, you take it down, man.
Well, thank you, Mr. Tuneson. Thank you on behalf of my mom and my family and, uh, and I have my deceased father and all the veterans, all the county employees that were veterans, all the county employees whose parents were Purple Heart recipients. And thank you, sir, for your service.
You're welcome.
I'd like to echo Maggie's sentiments. Thank you, Ken. Thank you to Maggie and her father and her family and to all the county employees. We are really fortunate to have a lot of county employees who have served in the military or have family members. So it's a great way to start this morning, so thank you. All right, on to routine business. First item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a motion to approve the mission, the commission meeting minutes from February 25th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $776,092.16.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are reports, and there are none this morning. Next item is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Carrie Deaver, good morning.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have a fairly lengthy list of anniversaries for March 2020. Celebrating five years of service, we have Albert Chigola at JDC and Aaron Hirschberger at Public Defender's Office. Celebrating 10 years of service, we have John Trana at IT and Dean Hodgson at Human Services. Celebrating 15 years of service, Greg McNamara at the State's Attorney's Office, Jeff Thorson at the Sheriff's Office, Travis Kruger at the Air Guard, and John Sights at the jail. And then we have four employees celebrating 20 years of service this month. Melissa Godber at the museum, Jolynn Harris at the jail, Shannon Hemingway at Human Services, and Randy Miegar at the museum. It's always surprising to see such a long list of individuals, especially with those numbers of service, so our gratitude to them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And then this month, or actually for February 2020, I would like to record that we had 280 volunteers across nine departments at the county. And when I think about, almost half of our departments are using volunteer services, we're very grateful to them.
Another reason to be grateful this morning, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so it takes us to item six, abatements. There are none. Item seven, requests, notices and requests, there are none. So item eight, planning and zoning notices.
Good morning, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This morning, I bring rezoning 2001, the first hearing for this rezoning. It's to rezone a parcel of land north and west of interstate, or the intersection of South Dakota Highway 115 and County Highway 130, as shown on the map here. It's also commonly referred to as renter corner. The request is to rezone the property from A1 Agriculture to C Commercial Zoning District. This item was brought before the Planning Commission on February 24th. There was several neighbors that appeared the, the meeting with concerns primarily regarding flooding and what development would do for future flooding and for commercial development, including property values and noise. The Planning Commission heard these items, these, had the public hearing and recommended denial for the item for, and this is the next step here, so it will bring it to you whether it's denied or approved at the Planning Commission stage. So today, action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice for the public hearing, and staff recommends that we publish notice for March 24th. Is there any questions?
Move to set the date of public hearing for March?
March 24th.
24th.
And I just want to confirm, that's the, to set the, um, public hearing on March 24th, 2020 for rezone number 20 dash 01?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and a second, any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien. I believe Melinda Storey will be joining us in a second. Here she is.
And here she comes.
Good morning, Melinda. Yep, we knew you'd be coming.
Thank you, Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. Um, the current balance on DPNO 30084 is $3,504.83. The joint lien represents poor relief and legal fees for both parties. However, the individuals named on the lien were married May 8th, 1995, separated September 1997, divorced April 9, 2010. The petitioner recognizes his responsibility for half of the rent in 1995, which is $68, hospital fees in 2005 for $2,296.03, and legal fees in 2006 for $238.20. The three fees total, excuse me, $2,602.23. He would like to purchase the rent-to-own home that he and his daughter have been living in for several years. The purchase agreement lists a price, a price of $75,000 and a closing date on or before July 26, 2020. His 2019 tax report shows an income of $40,440 with a refund of $2,787. His application lists assets totaling $6,500 and $8,005 in liabilities. The petitioner is offering $1,000 to satisfy his debt on this lien and is requesting to be released from the, his responsibility of the joint lien in the amount of $2,602.23, leaving the remainder of the lien in the name of his ex-spouse in the amount of $902.60. If you vote in his favor, the amount forgiven will have been $1,602.23 with payment of $1,000.
Thank you. Are there questions from Melinda? Commissioner Karski?
Yes, Steve.
On the, um, one sheet, you have by the amounts, an L and a J, is that who the money?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that, that, that information was confirmed. They are responsible, each individual is responsible for those.
Okay.
Is the petitioner here?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Benega, sorry.
Uh, Melinda, with the partial payments that were made over the years, do you know if those came from the spouse?
Yes, yes, and they're listed down here in green on the lien summary sheet.
Right.
And with, and so you'll see that I have deducted the payments after everything that, that is her responsibility, leaving a balance of $902.60.
I have a black and white sheet.
You do?
At least for that particular color, I can't, but it doesn't make any difference. I'm just clarifying.
I'm sorry, I tried to be colorful on this.
You're always colorful.
I really appreciate that breakdown you did for us, that was very helpful. Commissioner Karski?
Um, if we were to proceed with the, um, DPNO, would we have to say where the money is applied to, if it's public defender or poor relief, or is, is that how we typically have done that?
I think we accept the partial payment, or whatever partial payment we agree to for him, and then we release anything else that would be attributable to him and re, leave, leave the remainder on, um, the other, the former spouse.
Okay. Yeah, if I could make a comment?
Absolutely.
So much of this goes back 27 years. It's been sitting on our, um, money that's owed to us for a long time. The most recent is five years ago, and that's a small amount. 14 years ago, 15 years ago, um, is where the lion's share of the, um, the debt, the lien comes from, and it's, um, looks like, if I can say hospital bill, um, and we're receiving an offer to make this good and let this person, um, so they can proceed and buy a, buy a house, close on a home, and it, it, a lot of debt collectors would be happy for 50 cents on the dollar, basically, and it, I, I would be happy at that level also to, to get something, to take it off the books, and, and I would make a motion that we accept the offer of the $1,000 and move forward and let this person move forward with their life.
My only question, I'll second that for conversation, but my only question then is the 90260 that's remaining, is that going to be the former spouse's responsibility?
Yes.
Okay, just want that clarified. I will second the motion again.
So we have a motion and a second, and we're clear what that motion is? Good, then I'm not going to have to restate it. All right, so we have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please. Benega?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Bender? Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, this is our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak during public comment? All right, seeing no one rushing to the podium, we'll move on to regular business. First item is item 10, to consider a proclamation to declare March 10th and 11th Sioux Empire Water Festival Days. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm not trying to break the place. Chuck Martinell, SJSU Extension, Minnehaha County Forest Program Advisor and Extension Department Head. Proclamation for the Sioux Empire Water Festival, this is our 27th year of having the water festival here in Minnehaha County. It takes place on the campus of USF over the course of two days, um, three days, we count the setup day. We have approximately 90 some schools coming, or 90 some classrooms coming this year from about 39 schools, so it's a, it's a pretty big event, about 2,100 4th graders. So I'll read the proclamation here, and I'll let you guys talk about it. Whereas the Big Sioux River underlies approximately 1,000 square miles and together with the Big Sioux River provides water to communities in southeastern South Dakota, whereas if they are too impaired, if they are under the influence of drugs or alcohol and unable to speak with us, we would not respond. If they have already ingested something, if they've swallowed some pills, then we need them to get medical attention first. And then if we're dealing with a minor individual whose legal guardian is not present to sign the consent, we would not report to that call. So our highest number of subjects that we have responded to is that 21 to 30 Caucasian male group. And our diversion rate is, remains over 92%. Diversion meaning that they did not go in on an involuntary hold, they were either able to come up with a satisfactory safety plan and remain at home, or go to another facility such as Children's in the Silvering Center, something like that, where we know that they're going to be kept safe. Our highest referrals is the Sioux Falls PD, and when they respond to the calls, they give us a satisfaction rate, and 432 of the calls responded to did receive a highly satisfied.
Hi, I'm Debbie Feinie, and I am with the Alternative Sentencing Program. This program is a community partnership between Southeastern Directions for Life and the Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office. And we started this partnership, uh, starting on our four years this year. The program allows individuals with mental health and community, and chemical dependency concerns to get connected with services. Individuals have access to case management, psychiatry, recovery services, medication management, employment connections, benefit specialists. In 2019, we had 242 referrals, 135 of those received evaluations, whether it was mental health, chemical dependency evaluations, or a combination integrated one. These evaluations are free to the county that we do provide. The program was designed to reduce incarceration costs by maximizing the community-based services in lieu of incarceration. Um, I'd like to share a video here coming up soon that we created for a fundraiser that we did last year. It highlights an individual that was looking at 300 years in the county, or 300 years, 300, uh, days in the county jail and seven years in prison. The judge commanded her on all her hard work and suspended all of the county time and the seven years in prison. The staying out of, staying out of the prison just for one year is $28,000 that she saves. She has been clean of alcohol for, alcohol and meth for over 14 months. She has a job and her own apartment now. If I can click.
Can I go to the, our website and pull it up?
That's because it's YouTube. I don't have access to YouTube from in here.
Would I be able to go onto the website?
Not if it's going to YouTube.
No, it would be off of our website.
Okay.
If possible.
Oh, man, since he rebooted the system, this isn't going to work very well.
It's okay, we can, we can, we want to, do you want us to send you the link?
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, if, if this is, um, I appreciate you guys being patient and trying to work through this, but if we can't get it to work, it would be great. I'm sure we would all watch it if you'd just send us the link.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. I know you've done great work there, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Why don't you just come back up? So, yeah, so we'll make Chris back clean up here, and if you guys have questions or any, Commissioner, Commissioner Benega?
Chris, I have a question about the mental health court. If you have adults in that court that have children, do they automatically get referred to your first program, uh, that talks about the play-based therapy and all the statistics that come with that? Because it seems like the kids are affected as much or more sometimes as the parent that's being
Right.
supported.
So Melissa, so you want me, but it's Melissa that goes in.
Yeah, that's fine, you can bring your whole team up.
Yeah, we'll bring the team.
Yeah, we would refer any of their family members or children to services that they need as well. We do have a participant right now that her two sons are already enrolled in our SCD services at Summit, so we would make those referrals too, because it does affect the whole family system as well, so, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Karski?
A couple of things, as Chair of the Public Defender's Advisory Board, also working in with triage and so many other things that I've been exposed to in my last three years as a county commissioner, and I, I look at the work that you do, and, you know, there's so much of an issue with mental health and co-occurring, um, drug dependency, alcohol, et cetera, um, and it's expensive. I mean, it's expensive to the, the county and the taxpayers, and what you're doing is actually, is helping people, but it's also saving us money.
Right.
Um, but it's so much of it, when I look at the screen on the Mobile Crisis Team on the annual statistics, it also involves truly a buy-in from law enforcement and the police department, and, um, I'm happy to see the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office, you know, availing themselves to what you offer. Can you talk a little bit more about, you know, maybe why we're not seeing more participation from other entities? I'm glad to see the police department is so, um, bought into your programs and what's going on.
Right, and we do cover both Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, the entire county, not just the Sioux Falls city limits. I think a lot of it is just the length of time that it may take us to get there for some of the, the far outlying areas. And two, I think that, you know, we, we kind of get stuck in our ways, and it, it's difficult to, to think outside the box and consider other options, but we really have made a stride to go out to these smaller communities and educate them and encourage them to use the Mobile Crisis Team, because really, it is a huge benefit, as you can see with the more than 92% diversion rate.
Yeah, I mean, you know, somebody's having a mental health crisis and, you know, sometimes for law enforcement, the quick solution is, well, we're just going to put them in jail for their protection and everybody around them. But when in reality, leaving them or being able to keep them where they are probably is a better thing than sitting in jail.
It really is, it's a lot less traumatic, and two, it's, it's much better for their families, they can stay at home with their family, their pets, they can go to work the next day. Truly is a good thing for everyone involved.
I just want people to understand what you do and how it impacts, um, our whole community, so, thank you.
The state is looking at this as a model program that they'd like to be able to roll out across the state, because we've had such tremendous results with this program, so.
And we're, we're working with other communities to get their programs started, so.
Right, right. And I was actually just contacted by an individual from South Carolina, wanting to know if I could help them get a team going in their area. So, I mean, really, the word is getting out.
Thank you. Anything else?
Well, we really appreciate you all being here this morning, we appreciate the tremendous work that you do for the citizens of Minnehaha County and to keep people safe. It's a really important issue that is finally getting kind of the attention it deserves on a statewide basis, so we appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Yes.
All right, so that takes us to a brief presentation on the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie Gravitt, good morning.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. I'm going to go off my presentation for just a minute before they leave. They also provide the QMHP services that we have for our youth out at our facility. Uh, they are on call and they do a wonderful job, and we're glad to have the partnership with them as well, so, uh, thank you, Chris, and thank your staff.
Sure, thank you, Jamie.
Um, I'm going to go through some of the accomplishments that we had at JDC in 2019, and also, I'm going to talk to you about some challenges and concerns, and then some projects we're dealing with, and then finally, I do have some good news that I want to share with you as well. So, to start off with on the accomplishments, uh, this past year, we've started a long-distance visitation opportunity for, uh, youth and families that, uh, where their families can't really drive the two and a half hours to get here to visit. Uh, we've received a grant through the Department of Corrections where we bought three tablets, and we're using a pro, a program called Zoom that is, it meets HIPAA regulations for, for privacy. Uh, we're still working to get it fully implemented, but, uh, it's been good in several situations. We've also been able to use those tablets to provide, uh, it's called SIBISA, Cognitive Behavioral Interventions for Substance Abuse, uh, where a kid could do it online through telehealth, and we've been able to use that technology to try and provide more opportunities for youth. We are always improving our programming for the youth in custody, we do this with the support of many volunteers and partners. We couldn't do it without them. If we had to pay for all these services, uh, our budget would be out, way higher than what it currently is. Uh, we have people coming in, providing, teaching kids how to code on computers, we have, uh, Health Connect coming in, providing, uh, anti-vaping classes as well as some hygiene classes and, and initial opiate prevention type classes. We have Urban Indian Health that comes in and meets with the kids. We, uh, have MRT classes through Southeast Behavioral Health. In the summer, we work to find volunteers to come in, we had the zoo come in, we had the butterfly house come in, uh, Department of Labor comes in. It's amazing if we just ask what we can find, and we're providing opportunities for these kids to not only learn how to survive on their own when they get out, but also to find out about community opportunities they have to be involved in or go check out so that they don't have to turn to delinquent behaviors for their excitement, so. Um, we're going to be, uh, improving the training with our staff for conflict resolution. We believe this will improve all around how things go at JDC, uh, and we're going to be seeking other possible grant opportunities for improving our facility as well. We're going to continue to serve as a model site for JDAI, JDAI in South Dakota. Davidson County and Brown County are coming on board, uh, Brookings County's looking to come on board, uh, Cottington County's on board, and we help them with any technical advice that we can give them of what we went through, while our process has been going on since approximately 2010. Uh, last week, you'll see in an upcoming area, but I'll just get to it now, we had our training for our JDAI facility assessment, it's a self-assessment where we find community people to come in and, uh, look at different areas of our facility and give us guidance on how we could improve them. Uh, so, in that training, there was people from Pierre, Watertown, Aberdeen, so that they could see what the training's all about, what the whole process is all about, and then also to meet as a peer group and talk about issues in detention, and how we can give them guidance on how to do that. Last year, we were able to secure Class B retirement for our staff, that's been a great improvement. Uh, our staff are very happy about that and feel recognized for what they do. Talked about conditions of confinement, we're, uh, I have to thank Mark for a lot of our improvements in conditions of confinement. We have a new gym floor that's amazing, all new lighting in our gym that's amazing, the kids love it. Uh, they now have a three-point line that they can shoot from behind, and they think that's the greatest thing ever, so. Uh, we're improving the looks of the building with paint and carpet. Uh, Mark's just been a great partner to work with and, and get some things to make the environment itself better for the youth.
Just for the viewing public, you're talking about Mark Krins, our
I'm sorry, Mark Krins, the Facility Director for Minnehaha County. Uh, we, this, uh, fall, we had the school lunch program review, we did our admin review. We had one, uh, major change that we had to do, and that was with how we account for money that comes in from, uh, the federal program and keeping track of how that money is spent, so that it's just spent on federal, uh, or on school lunch type activities, and we worked with the auditor to fix that, and that's taken care of. We're going through a procurement, uh, assessment right now, uh, and that should be wrapping up in the next month. And then finally, we received our pre-ac certification in January of 2019. This was our recertification, it was our second audit that we completed. Some of the challenges that we face are federal mandates. Uh, in October, OJJDPC, uh, changed, made changes in how we can hold status offenders. Uh, it's still being worked out with everybody that's involved to make sure that we're in compliance with those, uh, holding of status offenders. Uh, the UJS and DOC are working hard together as long, along with us to make sure, uh, uh, status offender's not held in secured detention for more than seven days. And, uh, prior to that, there, the judges were able to sentence a youth violating probation or a court, a valid court order for up to 90 days. So there's some things that need to be worked out, and we're working together to make sure that we're not violating the rule set by the federal, uh, agency. And then we have the use of confinement that I've talked to you about before that's coming forward, and we're working to meet those needs. Uh, last year, you approved a, a, a new training, uh, position. Last year, you approved a new training position that will be starting in September and we're going to utilize that to get our staff prepared to be better in conflict resolution. Our building's not necessarily conducive to meet that mandate and we're working to find out every opportunity that we can to make sure that we meet that. And then staffing's been a challenge. It's not so much having enough staff authorized by the commission, it's a matter of being able to hire new staff. We've been working for almost a year to fill one open position. We get people hired and they don't stick around or we're ready to hire them and they've found other positions and we start all over again. So, we currently are interviewing for our last position and hopefully we can keep that filled. One of the biggest challenges I see for our budget this year is the cost of nursing. We just entered into a new nursing contract. It's about a twenty-four percent increase over what we were paying before. So, I anticipate that that will continue to rise. And then our final challenge is JDAI slip. And what I mean by that is we get comfortable in what we're doing and sometimes we forget that we need to keep moving forward or we fall back into some bad habits. We're going to be meeting March eighteenth as a work group to make sure that we get back on track. We've had a lot of turnover in key positions and we want to get everybody together and make sure everybody's on the same page. Projects, our main projects are with facility. We're looking at courtroom safety, the JDAI facility assessment, and then our JDC committee looking at recommendations for renovation at our facility to make things better. So, all three of those tie in together and they're going to have an integral part on what we recommend to the building committee for any changes that need to be made. And I already talked about re-stimulating JDAI. The one thing I didn't put on there for a project is we just entered into a new contract for our GPS electronic monitoring. We're very pleased with the company that we chose with the Sheriff's Department and we just started that last week. So it's rolled out and it's doing very well. And now for the best part, the good news, we're accomplishing our goal of holding the right youth in the right place at the right time. That's our goal from the beginning. We're working with our partners to make sure that that works right. The second thing is the Detention Cost Sharing Fund. We were told last year that that was going to be the last year. The legislature did end up funding it going forward. We've submitted our request for that and we should be seeing some money come in for that. And we're doing it with a fairly steady budget. What I call the total cost of what it costs to the budget, I look at how much we spend each year in our expenses and I subtract our income that we get from different revenues and I come up with a number that I look at as total cost. And 2019 was the lowest year since 2012. So we hope that we can maintain that year to year. We're not looking for new positions or new vehicles. We're looking to maintain what we do with what we have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Jamie? Commissioner Benega.
Jamie, would you just remind us how many partners we have with JDC?
The county partners. We have fifteen other counties that we serve and we also house for the Department of Corrections and then very rarely for the US Marshal Service.
Right.
Commissioner Karski.
As part of the facilities task force that we did not that long ago, we were able to take some people through your facility, which doesn't happen very often, but I think most people don't understand how well you do with what little that is given to you and, you know, the people that work for you do a great job. If it's your son, daughter, or grandchild, or niece or nephew that needs for whatever reason to go there, you want to know that they're safe while they're, you know, going through that process and they are. You've done a good job with your people, but yeah, it's not a fancy place and you do a good job budget-wise and just to thank you and your staff to recognize them for what they do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. One of the things that we look at, and it's a JDAI philosophy, is it's the my child. If my child had to be in this position, would we want them in our facility? I had a person that looks at facilities all over the United States and they told me that if their child had to be in a detention center, they'd want it to be our center or the center in Pennington County. So, that was one of the best compliments I could get because they can be a very vocal opponent to things that we do in detention, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your compliments and I appreciate theirs.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you. Thank you to you and your staff for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so that takes us to item thirteen, which is to consider bid results and award recommendations for Highway Project MC nineteen oh seven and authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement with Swingin' Construction Company for Structure fifty dash two oh six dash one hundred replacement. I read the whole thing to give you time to get up here, so.
Right, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. On February nineteenth, we received four bids for this bridge replacement project. This bridge is located just west of Midway Corner in Minnehaha County. It was inspected last year and because of the degradation of the degradation rate of the structure, it was posted for reduced load limits. And so we placed it in a replacement plan. We received four bids and they're really great bids. Our engineer's cost estimate was one million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. We received four bids under one point two million dollars, the lowest being Swingin' Construction for nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. This project is scheduled to be a seventy-five working day project completed by November thirteenth this fall. And so we look forward to awarding this contract and would make a recommendation for award.
I would move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Yes.
Benega.
Yes.
Bender.
Aye. A motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item fourteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign construction administration agreement with Short Elliott Hendrickson for Highway Project Number MC nineteen oh seven, Structure fifty dash two oh six dash one hundred replacement.
This is the same exact project that Swingin' Construction will now be constructing this summer. The construction admin will be done by SEH. The agreement amount is sixty-seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars and ten cents. And the structure for this agreement is an hourly rate for the engineers on site and so it will be not to exceed that dollar amount. And I'll stand by for any questions if you have any questions.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item fifteen, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign a purchase agreement with the City of Sioux Falls to acquire right-of-way to reconstruct that same structure.
Commissioners, again, is that same structure. We needed to purchase some right-of-way on both sides of the road to accommodate some space to be able to place some riprap and construct the bridge. The City of Sioux Falls happens to own the land on both sides of this project and so there's two different parcels. One of them is point one acre, one of them is point zero nine acre. And the city agreed to transfer, sell the property for one dollar. So, it's basically a donation and asking for your approval and permission for the chair to execute the right-of-way purchase agreement.
Commissioner Karski.
Nice when you don't have to twist arms, right?
Right.
Move approval.
We negotiate for a lower price.
We could re-enter into negotiations based off the commission's recommendations.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. DJ, you had the lion's share of our agenda today.
I did, I'm sorry.
So, you had item sixteen as well, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign purchase agreements for two land parcels to acquire right-of-way to reconstruct Highway one forty-nine.
Commissioners, we've had several different agenda items for this project. This is the north phase of the one forty-nine reconstruction project. Right now, the status of right-of-way acquisition is we've received, or we've completed thirty-one of forty temporary easements, fourteen of sixteen permanent drainage easements, and seventeen of twenty-two H lots. This will be for two H lots along that corridor and look for your approval on these right-of-way purchase agreements.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions for DJ? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And this takes us to your last item, which is to authorize the chair to sign a utility relocation agreement with East River Electric for Highway Project MC seventeen dash zero one, Highway, County Highway one forty-six reconstruction.
Commissioners, this summer and probably next, first half of next summer, we're going to be reconstructing seven miles of County Highway one forty-six from State Highway eleven to the Minnesota border, just southeast of Sioux Falls and south of Brandon. This project has a long utility corridor of Sioux Valley Electric, or East River Electric, I'm sorry, and they have got poles basically up and down the entire corridor. A lot of those are in the existing right-of-way and can be relocated at the utilities' cost. A lot of them are also on private easement or private property that we have acquired through the right-of-way acquisition process of this project. But because they were on private easement or private property prior to a starting, we have to pay for those relocation costs. We've negotiated the attached agreement and that agreement dollar amount is one million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred, thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents. And that's to pay for the large portion of their cost of that relocation. They should be able to do this work simultaneously with the contractor out there doing the work. This project has a lot of grading associated with it, taking downhill tops and adding in dirt on the low areas to provide more of a safer corridor. And so because of that grading, a lot of these poles have to be removed and relocated. So, I'll stand by for any questions. If you have any questions, otherwise, look for your approval of this agreement.
Commissioner Karski.
DJ, I don't say ouch. I mean, it's an expensive thing. Were we anticipating this cost in this project?
We've been working with East River for several years on this estimate. This project is a huge project for them. It's probably the biggest utility relocation cost that we've had on a single project with a single utility. And so, yes, ouch, we were anticipating it just because we knew the impact that we had on their utility and we knew where their utility was at in relation to the right-of-way. And so, we're not excited to pay it, but it's definitely our cost.
Okay.
Other questions? DJ, I think, I mean, I know we've talked about this stretch of road quite a bit, but it's been over a long stretch of time. If you could, and you alluded to this a little bit in your presentation, but if you could just remind us about the reason that you came forward and recommended tackling this stretch of road in the first place.
Sure. This project was a safety-driven project. There's been a higher crash rate along this corridor than what we see on any other road. This was probably considered the most dangerous section of roadway in our county. It has a significant amount of traffic that comes from Minnesota and gets over to Highway eleven and then goes probably to Sioux Falls or Brandon. And there were some fatalities on this roadway. I think the most recent one was maybe two thousand and eight, but there's been a number of fatalities and that's something that, when we're looking at the crash rates and the severity of those crashes, that sticks out. And so, we decided to do a project because of the grading, the existing grade of that road section, there's a lot of hills, there's a lot of poor sight distances, there's a lot of accesses that are in poor locations, kind of blind spot locations. There's two intersections with other county highways that are poor sight distance and so we decided to redesign this whole corridor, this whole roadway. It'll be reconstructed in a way that's a lot more safe and has a lot better sight distance and will be a lot safer for travel.
Commissioner Karski.
Maybe not the right time or place, but Highway one eleven, that two-mile highway, was kind of going to be a project for a little bit and we've decided to put it on hold. Can you update anything or is that something you'd rather talk about at another time?
It might be better to talk about it at a different time. That section of one eleven is just south of this project. It has a very low traffic volume on it and we did look at doing a safety-driven project on that because of a hill crest that provides really poor sight distance next to an intersection. When we looked at that and the cost of what it would take to redo that intersection and that part of that corridor, the benefit cost didn't really pan out and so we're looking at alternatives. One of the alternatives that we're looking at is doing a much smaller project, designing it more for like a gravel road township section as opposed to a higher-speed county highway.
Basically discouraging traffic on it.
Right, yeah. And there's alternative routes that are very close that make better sense. And so, just in the process of evaluating the benefit cost of doing a project, whether it's reconstructing into a highway section or reconstructing into a township section.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Have a motion yet?
No, we haven't had a motion yet.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Is it a roll call resolution? I don't have it down. It's a roll call.
I can certainly do one.
We'll just go ahead and be safe. So, roll call.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, that takes us to item eighteen, which is to consider a resolution to approve two property tax payment proposals for Record zero five three zero zero eight and four zero two six five. Auditor Litz, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. And thank you for that introduction, Gene. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And today, I am here to seek approval for the property tax payment plan resolutions for RDIDs five three double oh eight and four zero two six five. Attached are the two resolutions creating the payment plans for back taxes and they're for two separate property owners. The first one is property five three double oh eight and that is for the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-two cents. It is on a individual owner and his residence. The property is clear and I think that the chances of him succeeding with this is very good. The second property, four zero two six five, for the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents, is a church and apparently for years, the tax bills have been going to their old church address. I don't know what happened to them there, but these are actually for specials on a property. That's the city specials for curb and gutter and roadway. And it has a lot of runage, square, running feet of runage and that's why those specials looked a little bit higher. But that church has asked for a payment plan and so this is what we worked out. I'm here to seek approval and answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski.
Not specifically in regard to this one, but on the past ones that we've approved, has there been any people falling out of compliance with those?
You know, every month, I get notified by Mary, the ones that are behind, and I do have one that is not returning the calls. It's a smaller amount and I've been thinking about going over to the house to actually see them. I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but at the end of the day, you know, we're looking at probably taking that tax deed again if he stays delinquent on those. But by and large, it has been a successful thing. I know there's been more of them this last year and a half than I've ever had before, but I think a lot of people really appreciate a chance to redeem their properties and overall, I'd say that it's been going well.
Other questions?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second for, to approve two property tax payment proposals for Record zero five three zero zero eight and four zero two six five. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your work on those.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, that takes us to item nineteen, which is to consider a resolution to establish hourly rates for certain Board of Mental Health or Mental Illness activities. Carol Mueller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. The QMHPs are Qualified Mental Health Professionals are a very integral part of our mental health, our Board of Mental Illness. These are the people who do the assessments and determine if somebody should be kept on a mental health hold, if they need to go to Human Services Center at Yankton, how that needs to go through. They're a very important part of us and last year, we spent two hundred and ten thousand dollars on that. The last time that their rates were adjusted was in two thousand and seven, which is almost thirteen years ago, because it was done at the end of the year. The attached resolution would increase the rate to a hundred dollars, starting the middle of this month, by an increase of ten dollars. And then we would increase it another ten dollars effective January one, twenty twenty-one. Normally, we would do this during a budget process. We've had some changeover in our chairpeople and some good conversations about that and they've said, you know, we really need to do some adjustment now and we were able to negotiate doing it in a two-step process.
Questions for Carol? Now to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the established hourly rates. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to legislative update. Craig Dewey, good morning.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. You have the legislative update here. We passed Crossover Day last week, which means there's very little of the legislative session remaining until they recess to consider the budget, rather for Veto Day. We have the legislature wrapping up toward the end of next week. Given that, a number of bills are continuing to move through the process. There are a couple of bills that I'd like to give you an update on. One specifically is House Bill 1293. You may express a little initial concern that the bill was unanimously tabled that would have provided funding for state emergency radio upgrades. That was a separate bill that was separate from the governor's budget. It's my understanding, after reaching out to Matt Thuley with Metro Communications, that funding for emergency radio upgrades remains in the governor's budget. So, just because 1293 got killed, don't be too concerned about that. Funding is still moving forward. And then, lastly, there is Senate Bill 157. As you may recall, that was a bill initially drafted at the request of the governor regarding revising planning and zoning statutes for counties. Commissioner Heiburger testified in favor of that bill on behalf of the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, and as a Minnehaha County Commissioner, that bill is up for a hearing in the House. It's my understanding that it's tomorrow. I edited Commissioner Heiburger's initial testimony to be in letter form, since she is out in Washington, DC for a national conference with NACO. She couldn't be there to testify tomorrow, so that testimony remained virtually identical, or rather, the letter remained virtually identical to the testimony. Would be happy, though, to answer any other questions you have regarding bills on the update.
Questions? All right. We thank you for your work, keeping us informed about all of that. Things change rapidly out in Pier, so we appreciate your hard work on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Karski?
That was bad timing. Pass.
Benega, did you have a liaison report?
I would just say that we've had a briefing, so to speak, to start the process of the Highway Department's potential growth and relocation. And secondly, we had the opportunity, Commissioner Heiburger, Commissioner Karski and I were able to tour the jail last week, and it was very educational. I'm excited about the fact that it seems like there's a great flow through the process, and with updates that they've made and the policies and procedures that they have in place, it's unfortunately a growth process that we have to deal with, but I think it's very well done.
I think big step forward in safety of staff and of the people that pass through those doors, so. Commissioner Karski, you want to try again?
Yeah, now that I caught my breath. Makita Lakita, and I don't know if I talked about this last week, but hired Jesse Fonker to be the executive director, which I was pleased with. When Nick Fosheim resigned, I looked at Jesse and said, "I think you should apply for this job," and I had nothing to do with the selection or the hiring of Jesse, but I was very pleased that he was. And if you've read any of the recent articles in the media, obviously, well-qualified individual and should be directing us in a great direction, so.
I agree. That was an exciting announcement, so. I just have a couple. Last Friday, was able to meet with the sheriff and Jason Gierman, our Emergency Management Director, and Jason will be here next Tuesday to talk about the planning that's been going on, ongoing for potential flooding this spring. You know, thankfully, we've had some good weather here lately that hopefully will help to mitigate that, but we're just one weather event away, one bad rainstorm, and we're going to have a lot of issues again this spring. And so, there has been a lot of planning for that. There was a press conference last Friday around noon, and Jason's going to bring an update to us next week, information about sandbagging and those kinds of things, and he's also going to talk a little bit about coronavirus and the planning that's going forward on that as well. And then, as far as Building Committee goes, the Admin Planning Committee for the Admin and Extension met last week, and we also had a really good, very productive initial meeting to kind of lay out how the process would move forward. Had a lot of department, affected department heads there, and so, I thought it was a great opportunity to share information, get everybody kind of informed of what to anticipate as we move forward, and, you know, that always helps. It's a kind of a scary process to think about renovating and moving and all the things that go along with that, but I think people felt more comfortable with the process after we met. So, those were both good meetings. Anything else? All right. That takes us to new business. Is there any new business? If not, any old business? All right. To entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, everyone.
I'm so sorry, Chair Olivia.